We're going to go ahead and call to order. It is 1:02. And all of the elected board members are present. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever-keeping justice for all.
Okay, today we have only one item on our agenda. It is for discussion only. It is our draft environmental impact review. And at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Gibson.
Thank you. Welcome and welcome to the public who's joining us today. Just a couple really quick just housekeeping pieces. We are going to listen to the presentation first by Placeworks. And then up here at the podium, there are half-sheet comment cards. They're actually for questions. So please, if you want to grab a few of those in advance, and as you think of questions during their presentations, we will have time, once the presentation is over, after the board has had questions, we will work to answer whatever questions those of you here at the meeting might have today. So please feel free, you can grab some now or later, whenever you want. And we'll do that at the very end. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Critchfield to do some introductions because we have a couple people here in the room to help us, as well as our legal counsel today.
Thank you, Dr. Gibson. So I just want to point out next to Dr. Gibson up here is Junaid Halani from Lazzano Smith. And he has been helping us through facility issues and as legal counsel. We also have Dwayne Mears here. He'll be presenting this presentation. As the board knows, there was a contract approved with Placeworks to conduct the environmental impact review. And so he's here to talk about that and answer questions. We also have here Mimi Dean Zanzi from Williams and Associates. She has been one of our facilities consultants for a very long time. And so she's been also assisting as we go through this study. And so this is a heavy report, okay? It's 678 pages long, so this is not light reading whatsoever. The, just to kind of go over where we're at, the 45-day public review for this draft begins tomorrow. Okay, and so that will start. Notices will go out. There'll be a notice in the paper. We'll have it on our website. It's going to go in many directions there. And this is a 45-day review for any member of the public to comment on that, on the report. It can be a portion of the report, the entire report, they can comment on. And then we have a period where we look at how to respond to that. If we're missing something in the report, then there'll be another period for public agencies to comment. That's a 10-day period. And as I mentioned at a prior meeting, we anticipate March 6th being the date of 2024, being the date that we would bring this report forward as a final document for board approval. So as Dr. Gibson mentioned, today it's discussion only, just so that we help the board have a better understanding of what's going on. Again, we're not going to go through all 678 pages, but we have a presentation. The first chapter is an executive summary. Those are kind of the two base areas that we're going to work from today to help inform you. And of course, we've built in lots of time for questions. So I'm going to turn the time over to Dwayne. Yeah?
Just real quick, as far as the public comment, how does that work as far as during the timeframe, people have comments, is there going to be any type of, I guess, a special meeting? Or is it going to be during a board meeting for people to ask questions? Do they formally submit it? I think it'd be good to get that out there so that everyone knows, okay, this is how you're going to comment.
So I think Dwayne and Mimi Dean can talk about that a little bit. But yeah, it's definitely a great question. So I'm going to turn the time over to Dwayne to begin the presentation. We'll go from there.
Thank you. It's great to be here today. Again, I'm Dwayne Mears with a principal with Placeworks. And we have a project manager on this project, Mariana Zimmerman, who couldn't be here today. But you will meet her on March 6th. I do want to say that we represent a very large team, because this is a great undertaking, as you can see from the 600-plus acres, pages, excuse me. We have civil engineers involved, biologists, acoustical engineers. It goes on and on and on. And you'll see this as we go through here and as you dig into it. So a lot of work has gone into this. It's a pleasure to be here today with the public review starting tomorrow. And to answer your question real quick, yeah, during the 45-public-day review, we collect all of the comments that come in. We have a responsibility to answer those questions written. And you'll see that in a final EIR. I'll talk some more about that. But you'll see responses to all of the comments that we received. So let's go to the first slide, or the next slide. So this is what I'm going to cover today. I'm going to give you a very brief overview of the SEQA process. And if I use acronyms that you don't know, please stop me and I'll clarify. And of course, SEQA stands for the California Environmental Quality Act. I'm going to talk about the project determinations. In other words, we've done analysis on all of these different impacts and made determinations of whether you might have a significant impact from the project. I will explain the various technical studies that we've done. I'll talk about thresholds. And what I mean by thresholds is that everything about SEQA is determining whether an impact is significant or less than significant. So we have to have a threshold. If we're above a certain threshold, it's significant. Below the threshold, we say it's less than significant, or even no impact at all. And I'll talk about mitigation measures, how important those are. And especially talking about transportation, because of course, that's one of the big issues for any project generally. So let's go to the next slide. What's the purpose of SEQA? Obviously, the number one is to try to protect the environment. And we do that in different ways. We do the analysis. If we have an impact, we look first for mitigation measures. How can we reduce the impact to a less than significant level? And we also look at alternatives. Maybe there's an alternative way of achieving a project that would have less impact. So we look at those two different kinds of methods and tools. It also is intended to foster inter-agency coordination. And so, you know, our project may have some kind of impact on a city, or a county, or fish and game. And so there's a huge public process where these documents go to those agencies and they can comment. And we can help coordinate any issues that come up. And it's a very public process. The document is intended to be very objective. We're not taking a position. We're trying to give you objective information so you can make an informed decision. So let's go to the next slide. So here's the process. And you heard some of this from Jared. We distributed a notice of preparation. And basically, that's what we call a scoping process. And what we mean by scope is scope of the EIR. We think we know a lot about the issues that will come up, but we always can be better informed by asking other agencies and the public about what should go into the environmental document. Is there some issues that they know about that we should know before going into the process? So that notice of preparation was published for 30 days. We collected all of the information. At the end of that process, what we do is make sure that our scope is correct. In other words, we had our initial idea of what we should be looking at. We get the agencies and we review what they have told us. And we come up with the final scope of work and get started on drafting the EIR. So that ended back in July 20th. It was the end of that public review process for the notice of preparation. And we started the draft EIR. And you can see from July until now, that's how long it's taken us to get this document done. A lot of work has gone into this by a lot of different people. So we are here today where you see the star. And the blue highlighting means that those are areas where the public can be involved and provide input. But we're here at the draft EIR stage, 45 days. So this is the time to really dig in, look at the document, and come up with any questions you have. The public and the agencies will submit those in writing, or very typically by email, and that's fine too. And we'll collect all of those by the end of the 45-day period and start to kind of digest that. What did we learn from that? And of course, then we have to respond to comments as well. We will prepare what's called the final EIR. The final is the draft EIR plus all of our responses to comments. And it's other things as well. We have to do some other documents, a mitigation monitoring program. And what that means is we've got mitigation in there. Well, we have to monitor that we've actually followed through and done those things. So we'll have a monitoring program that will come before you in March. Other things, there's the findings, a statement of what we call overriding considerations. Well, we'll talk more about that in March. The school board meeting is scheduled for March 6th, as you see there. At that meeting, you will be, you'll have a chance to ask any final questions. You'll be asked to certify the document if it meets, if you think it's subjective. I mean, that will be the question. Is it objective? Is it accurate? And does it help you make a decision? And then you will certify the EIR. Following that, there's a kind of a sequence of other things. Again, approving the monitoring program, findings, and some other things. And then after all of that, then you will consider whether to approve the project at that point. If you approve the project, very next step, in the next day or two, we file what's called a notice of determination, which is the endpoint to the SEQA process. That is filed with the state clearinghouse and the county clerk's office. And there's some forms that go with that, and there's some payment to Fish and Wildlife at that time. But that ends the SEQA process. So let's go on to the next, and I'll get into some of the more nuts and bolts. So as you see here, the topics that we address in environmental documents is from A to Z. You know, aesthetics, all the way down to wildfire. And I'm not going to go and repeat every one of these. You will see a couple of those items that are in italics. And we did that because those are issues where we know we don't have an issue. We don't have any ag there or forestry resources, and so we dismiss that very quickly. Not a problem. There's another one, mineral resources. We don't have mineral resources. We know that, so we dismiss it. As thick as this document is, it's focused as well. I mean, that's the other thing to really think about this, is that we really focus on those issues that are of concern and may be impacted by the project. So let's go ahead to the next slide. And so here, the issues, and again, the focus of the EIR are those issues that we believe are of most importance, may have the biggest impact from the project. And so we studied in great detail air quality and greenhouse gas, archaeo and architectural history. And so we have, you know, we sent archaeologists out to these sites where we had improvements and soil disturbance. Same with biology. We did biological resource surveys out there, paleo as well. And noise is, you know, you'll see quite a bit of analysis on the noise impact of the project. And then, of course, transportation. So those are the major areas of focus for this draft EIR. Let's go on to the next slide. And I mentioned this already. What's really critical in SEQA is determining whether an impact is significant or not. And why that's so critical is that if it's significant, okay, so if we find an impact that's significant, we then have obligations to look for mitigation measures. So we need to figure out how are we going to reduce the impact? Or, again, I mentioned alternatives. Is there an alternative way of doing something that would minimize the impact? But here are the categories that we kind of put these impacts in. No impact, if there's really absolutely nothing, no association between the project and an issue, that's no impact. We may have some minor impact, and we would call that still a less than significant level because we're not over the threshold. Now, then we have a couple categories here where we did find a significant impact. But in the first category, well, the third one over, it's significant, or we think it's significant, but we found mitigation measures that would effectively reduce that impact to a less than significant level. Finally, if we can't find a way to mitigate the impact sufficiently, then we have to call it significant and unavoidable. And we have two issues that I'll talk about at the end where that was the case. Despite what we could come up for mitigation, we still call it significant, significant and unavoidable. So let's go to the next slide. These are the ones that we do address in the main chapter of the document, chapter five. You'll find all of these in there. But there are issues that were found to be less than significant for various reasons. And again, I won't go over those in great detail. I'll go into more detail where we had significant impacts. Let's go on to the next slide. Okay, so here are the ones, the issues where we did find it to be potentially significant, but we found mitigation measures that would reduce it to a less than significant level. So air quality. And specifically, this is the issue of construction. In other words, we're out there doing some grading work in some cases, we, you know, construction emissions, some diesel emissions. And so we get concerned about that impact on neighbors and et cetera. And so we have what we call construction best practices, and that's a mitigation measure in the document. What are we talking about? Well, we talk about watering any area that you've graded to keep the dust down. We specify the kind of equipment that you're going to use to minimize diesel emissions, that kind of thing. We limit the amount of idling of diesel trucks and all of that. So there's a lot of different things. These are fairly standard things. There's nothing extraordinary here. These are all pretty standard mitigation measures that you'd see in a lot of different projects. Biological resources. We sent, again, we sent biologists out to those sites that had some soil disturbance. But we are requiring some plant, bird, and habitat surveys very specifically. You know, some of the issues are that you can't survey for certain sensitive plants, except in their certain seasons. And so it's very important in terms of, you know, when you do these surveys. You can't do them all at one time necessarily. Cultural resources. We have a process, the mitigation measure is to have a process if anything is found. And so you're monitoring, and if you find something, then you deal with that. And there's, again, very standard ways of doing that. I do want to emphasize that in terms of biocultural and the paleo issue, these aren't, we did not find really sensitive areas. I mean, there's potential for some plants and other birds, et cetera. But this isn't like natural habitat that you find somewhere. I mean, these are, obviously, these are developed schools. And you have little remnants of different things that can be sensitive. I mentioned paleo. Again, have a monitor would be the mitigation measure. And hydrology, water quality, you know, you've got to do little detailed drainage studies to make sure that the water flows in the correct way. You've got capacity, et cetera. And so that's kind of a standard mitigation measure. Tribal-cultural, that's really the same. The mitigation is the same as I mentioned up in cultural resources. And utilities and service systems, again, you've got to make sure that the water and sewer lines are all correctly sized and located, et cetera. It's a fairly standard stuff. I mean, this isn't, we didn't find anything extremely unusual that I would want to point out to you in terms of the issues here and the mitigation measures that we would recommend. So let's go to the next slide. One of the really major changes that occurred in SEQA became final July 1, 2020. And we, SEQA nerds talk about it as SB 743. But it really just kind of upended the way that we look at traffic. And basically, I mean, kind of going backwards a little bit, you know, the issue in California and elsewhere has been that when we focus so much on traffic congestion, any project that would increase traffic congestion, then we look for mitigation measures, which is typically, well, let's add more asphalt and more road improvements, let's widen roads, et cetera. The concern has been when you do that in a sequential fashion, you do it over and over again, you basically end up with more pavement than maybe we want. And so the state of California has said, let's change that. Let's change our focus from traffic and just moving cars efficiently through intersections to a more broad approach of looking at different modes of travel, et cetera. And so what happened is that SEQA changed completely. And so we can no longer even call traffic congestion a significant impact under SEQA. So even though we get very concerned about it, and I do as well, but even though you might be concerned about traffic congestion in the SEQA process, and so again, I'm talking about the SEQA process, we can no longer call that a significant impact. And part of, in how we implement that, or how the state has told us we must implement that in the SEQA process, is we have changed our metrics. So we used to call, we used to deal with level of service. And so traffic engineers would give grades to an intersection. And if you have free-flow traffic through the intersection, that would be level of service A. So it's just A to F. If you get into D and E, you're talking about being delayed at an intersection. At F, you know, you may, it may take, you know, two traffic signal times to get through an intersection. So you're really, you're backed up, and you know, we're obviously very frustrated with that, but that would be a level of service F. So that is no longer the way we look at traffic or transportation in SEQA documents. It's been replaced with something called vehicle miles traveled. I'll refer to it as VMT. So it's LOS. LOS is level service. VMT is vehicle miles traveled. What do I mean by vehicle miles traveled? Very simply, if I go to Starbucks and I drive a mile and then come back home in a mile, that's two vehicle miles traveled. And that's the way that the state wants us to look at these things. So it's always about, and where this comes from is global climate change. Trying to find ways to reduce travel, to reduce emissions, to deal with global climate change. And so that's kind of, that's just the framework that we have to, the way that we have to look at that in these days. So next slide. So these are the impacts that we found to be significant and unavoidable. And so in transportation, our metric is vehicle miles traveled. And our threshold that the state is basically pushing is a net zero. In other words, no increase in vehicle miles traveled from a project. Now, in this case, you know, it's kind of common sense. If you have two high schools, you're going to one. Some of those people are going to drive further to get to, are going to travel further to get to that consolidated school. So just kind of by definition, you're going to have some increase in VMT. Really not any way around that. We have a mitigation measure for TDM, transportation demand management, which is kind of your educational program of carpooling, et cetera. But it's still going to be a significant impact, and so we had to call it that. The other one is the noise impact. And I'm talking about operational traffic near Argonaut, and I own junior high. and Ione Junior High. And it's cumulative, it wasn't, we didn't find it significant from our project alone, but on cumulative basis. And that's another issue in SEQA. We have to look just, not only, you can't just isolate our project, we have to look at what else is going around in the area. And so we have a specific plan that's been proposed that would generate traffic, there's other projects, and general increase in traffic in the background, and we look at all that, and we say, well, there would be a significant impact in terms of noise, and we don't have mitigation for it, so it'd be significant and unavoidable. I believe that's my last slide. Yes. So I'll be glad to answer any questions you have. I know it's a lot of information, a lot to get through in the next 45 days.
So I have a question about the traffic thing. So what we're saying basically is that, yeah, more people are coming, but we don't have to do anything about it. Is that kind of the gist?
In terms of SEQA, that's correct, that's correct. I mean, basically, that's it, congestion, we can't, even if we thought that it was a significant impact in terms of the increase in traffic and the intersections would get worse, we still can't call it significant. That's critical because it's, we only have mitigation if we have a significant impact. And we don't have, we can't call it significant, so there's no mitigation. So it's within the SEQA realm, that's the situation.
So within the SEQA realm, we can't do anything, but within like ethical realm, we could?
Yes, you're free to do any and all other things, yes. It's not a prohibition, it's just, it's a different framework, I guess is the way to look at it.
I haven't looked at, looked through here yet, but does the report address, like, options for transportation? I know if you say it's not an impact, does it still address that? Or does it look at history, or anything like that?
Well, we certainly looked at, what can you do about it in transportation demand management, busing, those kind of things are all, and maybe Jared can speak more to that, but yeah, all of that can be considered.
And Shane, we added with that to look at the level of service and to look at the intersection and congestion created. That will be an appendix in the final report, because again, it's not a requirement in SEQA, but we are adding that analysis in there because we know it's obviously a big topic of conversation.
So I guess I'm hoping that we're somehow able to get the history of, you know, when was Wicklow Way, you know, put on the list of one of the projects for the, I guess it's under the county, what's the status of that? And that's why I was wondering if that's going to be part of this, or part of this whole process?
Well, the way we look at it from a SEQA perspective, and also kind of this kind of non-SEQA analysis that we also did, we look at, we basically ask ourselves, at the time we do the notice of preparation, what else is out there? Because again, we have to look at cumulative impacts, and so that's one that was out there and had been proposed, so we have to include it, along with everything else that might be in there.
Thank you. Are we the only state that sees things this way?
Actually, no. I mean, it's been a trend, I mean, California certainly is at the forefront. But no, if you went to a national conference of transportation planning, you would see the same thing elsewhere, of kind of upending this, of trying to find other ways except for adding more pavement or roads, et cetera.
You talk about Wicklow Way and the Argonaut Lane feature, is there any mention in the plan about the Sutter Street realignment?
Yes.
Was that the end of the presentation?
Yes. Were you expecting more? What would you?
I, yeah. It was a four-hour meeting, I just thought that we were going to be, get more than just 10 slides.
So Julia, this is just to introduce everything, I mean, we do have time planned to look through the first chapter that you have in front of you. That is the executive summary, and so we wanted to just have Dwayne kind of lay the groundwork.
Okay, so it's not the end?
No, no.
Okay. Thank you.
This is not the end.
Yeah, I was feeling pressured to ask questions, and I'm like, how can I ask questions? I just cracked it open, so, okay.
Maybe if you and Amy Dean just kind of want to walk them through that executive summary and some of the highlights there, and then as we go, obviously, that's going to spur some questions. Let's start there.
Okay. Well, I'm not sure what you'd like to see first. You want to go through like the mitigation measures, topic by topic?
Sure.
Okay. So let's go to page...
Dwayne, real quick.
Yeah.
Just as a reminder, the decision was made back when the board approved this. This was a, this is a countywide SEQA, so we looked at projects in areas that may not even actually occur in Phase 1. The one I'd most specifically like to call out is in Sutter Creek. You know, the long-term plan is to transition out of the Sutter Creek primary location and have those students be located all at Sutter Creek Elementary. That would necessitate construction. That is not part of Phase 1, but instead of having to come back each time we do a phase, the intent of this document is to cover all of that. And so we have areas that were studied that may not be affected right out of the gate, but they will be in the future. And so that decision was made, just because we know that this is a huge change from what's been done in the district. I mean, we're talking about the biggest change since the three districts unified back in the early 80s, and so we wanted to make sure that we were looking at it comprehensively. And so you'll see references to Sutter Creek and to Sutter Creek Elementary, and you might be like, well, why are we referencing that? We haven't approved any construction or projects going on there yet, and that's true. But it's just, again, as part of our long-term plan of consolidation, to not have a split elementary campus in Sutter Creek, but to bring the primary school over to the property. And then, of course, there's a lot of, you know, energy and effort in Ione Junior High and the conversion there, and of course, at the high school that's currently Argonaut.
I think that was a great idea to basically do the entire county, because now we have answers for every location. We don't have to, if we're asked questions for something up country or down in Ione, we have it in front of us, so I think that was really good.
Thank you.
Can I ask a silly question? If you were sitting in this chair, what would you ask to be, to talk about first? How would you, how would you approach this?
Well, that's a good question.
Because I'm stuck.
I might be able to answer that.
I was asking him, though.
Okay.
He's the one that, what do you think it is? What should I, what should I ask you?
Well, you know, let me give you my perspective. You know, we do these all over the place. And what's happening in your district is not extraordinary, and the project is not extraordinary in the sense of what the impacts are. You know, politically, I think there's obviously issues that are occurring. I struggle with that, that's a good question, I really struggle with that. Let me give you, let me go back to another one. I would think that the major things that are happening here are at Argonaut, okay? So that's the major area of where you have construction, and you're changing. You have additional high school students going there. And so it's the most amount of construction, and it's the biggest change in terms of what's happening there because of the additional students. So I guess I would, that's a good question, I guess I would focus on Argonaut.
And I kind of agree with you, because it seems as though that's where a lot of focus has been lately, and discussion, and so about Argonaut and Argonaut Way and Highway 88, just so I understand this correctly, in the slide that you just presented, topics identified to be significant and unavailable, or wait, yeah.
Unavoidable.
Unavoidable. And that's based on this thing you're saying California's done since July 2020.
Correct.
Is there ever a time, I hate saying this, but we can't avoid talking about it. I've used this reference before, being a veteran in the military, SOPs are created when crap happens. If something bad were to happen, would things change then, or is it too late? Is it, we keep our marching orders? Like, how does that work?
Very good question. I don't want to make it sound like SB 743 prohibits you from making improvements and from working with the county, for example, and other agencies, Transportation Commission, to fix issues. I mean, those are important issues, they should be worked on. It's just that you're not required to do that under the SEQA process. So I would encourage, you know, I would encourage agencies to get together and figure out...
We're not required, who is we, school districts?
School district.
Okay.
You're not required to do that. In the old system, there would be requirements in terms, because it would be a significant impact, and you would have some mitigation requirements. That's no longer the case.
Am I on the wrong path to
No.
be considering death?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
Absolutely not. I mean, we all, what we don't want to do is to follow the SEQA process to the exclusion of public safety and everything else. I mean, we want a system that works, we want a road system that works. And in terms of Argonaut, the other thing too, that we're talking about too, you asked me about what I think is significant. You have more kids there, but you're making improvements in terms of the drop-off. That's one of the things that I, when I see that's a huge improvement, is the, what you're going to do, the changes that you're making through the campus, sorry, keep...
That microphone loves your sleeve.
Yeah, sorry about that. You're going to have a new drop-off zone that's expanded, it's going to come out, and the circulation's going to be better. That's really a critical issue, and very important, and I believe that that is going to solve some issues there, for sure. So that's a very positive thing, because you are going to have more kids there, more drop-offs, and that's an important safety feature.
And James, that's critical to what we're talking about, because, again, like Dwayne has said, while it's not a requirement, we kept that as a priority with the parent drop-off pickup loop and going in the campus, because if we're going to help any sort of situation with traffic, the best way for us to do it from the start is to contain more vehicles on our campus. Because that, then we can put into place practices like metering, so when parents are leaving the campus at the end of the day, we may not release all the cars at the same time. We have to look at staggered release times and things like that. So, and the more we can contain vehicles on our campus to do that, the less congestion we create out on the roads.
Could I ask just a clarifying question, please? So what I'm hearing is, and please, if I'm hearing this incorrectly, we do the SEQA report, but then you give feedback on all of these topics that we have that have to be looked at, but whoever is doing the project doesn't actually have to do any mitigation. It's just a recommendation?
Well, you have mitigation measures that you'll see in the document in the executive summary, and those things are required. And now in terms of transportation, it's really just the TDM program, the transportation demand management. Now, you're going to do things beyond that in terms of what you're hearing about staggered starts and releases, those kinds of things. You can do all of those things. But anything that's listed as a mitigation measure in the document is something that you are required to do. And you'll have a monitoring program to report on that, to make sure that it actually is getting done.
So Kayla, this kind of connects with James's question earlier, like, where would you start in this massive document? I mean, in the end, it's like, well, what does this mean for us, right? Like, we do all these studies, we've had specialists on our campuses looking at everything, like Dwayne said, we've had biologists and paleontologists and all these other experts that have come on these campuses and looked at the areas that are going to be affected. And so in the executive summary, page 1-10 is the beginning of the table, and those areas that Dwayne mentioned, so starting with aesthetics, starting with aesthetics, you go through, and it, on the left-hand side, it looks at the environmental impact that we have to consider. The next column then categorizes it with the thresholds that Dwayne mentioned earlier, right? No impact, less than significant, less than significant with mitigations, or the unavoidable, the, I forget, I forget it's...
Significant but unavoidable.
Significant but unavoidable. So then the next column over, the widest column in that table, are mitigation measures. So you'll see, if it's less than significant or no impact, then there's no mitigation required. If it's potentially significant, then we look at mitigation measures. And so I think you referenced like the contractor, like they're not under an obligation to follow the mitigation measures. I want to tell you they will be. So we haven't gone out to bid yet on these projects, because this needs to be completed first. Once this is completed and finalized by the board, then we will put in the bid documents that the contractor is required to work with us on every mitigation measure that we must follow. That also provides us the opportunity to bring in a company that has specialists in these areas to ensure that we are following the mitigation measures. So James had asked last night at the board meeting, well, what's that going to cost? One of the companies that has been most responsive is Ecor, and they have specialists in all of these areas. They have biologists, paleontologists, and all those different specialties that we need, so we could do one contract with them. The preliminary analysis from them is about $60,000. And then they would work with us and the contractor to ensure that we're following these mitigation measures. And so the table is quite long, Kayla, where you go through. And so this is where, I think, going back to Julia's question on, well, what else, right? I think it would be worthwhile, since we've carved out this time, to go through this table, to discuss these topics, because this is where it truly lays out all the mitigation. Now, there's much, much more, obviously, in the document, but I think in the end, this is probably the best place to go for us, when we're looking at where we're at with the process.
And that's, and I get that, and I don't disagree with that, would probably be a good place to start, as it lists all the potentially significant, or, you know, with mitigation and stuff on this chart, if I'm looking at it. But on here, on the slideshow, it says that the only two topics that were identified to be significant, but also unavoidable, are transportation and noise. And the noise, I'm like, that doesn't really freak me out that much, I mean, whatever. But the transportation thing out of all of them, and I know that there's nothing required necessarily, however, that is just kind of odd to me, like, there's no... Were there letters or anything written from other, like, are there any, what, who were the, I don't even know what I'm trying to say here. Who are the other, who were like the agencies and the people that have done the transportation studies? And is the study just the vehicle miles traveled, or did you say that we did more than that also?
So when we went through this process, so Placeworks oversaw the entire project, but then they subcontracted with many other organizations, as Dwayne mentioned, because all these specialists. So Kittleson was the company that they, their area of expertise is traffic. And so they did, they conducted the traffic study, looking at all of these things. But again, we're, we are talking about two different things, right? So we have, as far as what's required in the environmental impact study, we have the vehicle miles traveled, and there's a mitigation measure laid out here. When we look at level of service, that's not required here. But again, like I said, with Kittleson, we extended the contract to look at that. And that's where, if we're going to have direction from the board or analysis further beyond that, that would come outside of the SEQA process. And like Dwayne said, it doesn't prohibit us from looking at those things, but we're talking about what we would look at potentially doing versus what we're required to do.
Right, right. And that's, and that's fair, and I understand, I do understand that. But what, I just wanted to ensure that we can look into some of these things that are potentially very problematic for the students, outside of the SEQA process, even though I understand that that's not required of us.
And that's why we asked Kittleson to go further with their study. They did more in their study than what's required in SEQA.
Okay.
So that we have an analysis of the intersection, especially the one intersection in question, and all of that, so that we can, we can look at that. But again, that part of it is outside of SEQA.
Okay. And then, during the SEQA process, and you guys are the ones that helped conduct all of this, but do you, are there, are you talking with, I've noticed in here a little bit, again, this is the first time I've seen this, so I haven't been able to clearly read through this yet, but...
Agreed.
What? Yeah, I haven't been able to read through this yet clearly. But are there the, like, opinions, I should say, of our local agencies also in the SEQA report, or how does that work?
There is an appendix, I haven't looked at it yet, but that has all the letters that were submitted.
Okay, okay.
We had a total of 11 comment letters during the NOP process. And of course, those same agencies and others will comment on the... And of course, those same agencies and others will, will comment on the document now as well.
So Kayla, I wanted to, um, point out something that I was looking at in the table. So on page one twenty-six, one dash twenty-six. Um, utilities and service systems. So it lists the mitigation measures. It starts listing them. And it says that we shall, and if I'm correct, shall is a, it's a mandatory, right? Okay. Prepare site-specific water and wastewater infrastructure studies for Argonaut High School, I own junior high school, and Sutter Creek Elementary to analyze the proposed improvements at this site. So Jared, have those, um, infrastructure studies happened yet?
No, because when you're in the process of looking at mitigation measures, we don't, we, we have to wait till all of this is flushed out.
So this wouldn't even start until March?
Correct.
So there are studies that, that we are going to still have to do in order to, and then, um, I did read ahead, and that includes having to pay impact fees if that's what's determined from the study.
Okay. Well, I guess we should probably start looking at this then. There's a lot to look at.
Would you like to go through the table, or?
Yeah, let's go through the table. I think that would be helpful.
I have, I'm sorry, I have, I have one more question about the transportation. I keep hearing, uh, what's required, what's not required. Um, and unfortunately, we, you, you helped me understand that we're not really considering fatalities, or injuries, or traffic accidents, or any of that nature because of the switch in twenty twenty, right? No.
The, the issue is congestion, specifically congestion. We can't find that to be a significant impact.
Okay. And the reason I'm, I'm bringing that up is because I, I keep thinking of like, if there's not certain requirements for something like that, but there's certain requirements for other things, that's just confusing to me.
I agree.
Okay. All right. I'm, I just need to make sure that I'm not tripping.
Now, we're, you know, in the environmental field, we, we are struggling with it. Traffic engineers are struggling with it. You know, it's a, a huge change and, and we, traffic engineers have done level service for fifty years, and they've worked it out very well. And, and now all of a sudden, we're, we're upside down and doing something else.
I've used the term before, um, being an equipment operator in the military. I've built many roads and airstrips and things of that nature, and there's a good phrase called good enough for government work. And, uh, I feel like that's kind of what that means in this, what you're presenting is like, well, it's good enough to get by, but we're not required to do certain things, so let's just do this and then do that. Um.
Yeah, I mean.
Go ahead.
It, essentially, it's, it's the state of California has made a decision to, to say, listen, let's not focus on congestion, because in a, in a sense, you can look at it this way, that, that, uh, more congestion means more people will get out of the cars, and that's really kind of the intent. I'm not saying it's right, but that's kind of the intent of it.
Okay.
So James, I think to go with that, I, I, I think I know where you're, where you're going with this, but I, I just, correct me if I'm wrong. Again, required versus like what really should we do?
Right.
And that goes back to, as I pointed out at the high school, the driveway and parent drop off area that we're adding. That, that is a project that we have, that we have suggested with the board to do. But if you just looked at it through the lens of the environmental impact report, we, we don't have to do that. A- and so that's an example of something that, that we're trying to do to help improve the situation. That is not required in SEQA, but, but the challenge here, I just, I just wanna make sure we're clear with, with Dwayne and his company is their job is not to oversee all of consolidation, right? Their job is to help us just with the environmental impact report and to make sure that we're compliant with SEQA. As far as what we decide to do beyond that, that comes at the direction of the board.
Okay. I, I get it. I'm just, in order to help me understand this, this ginormous thing, I'm gonna be asking probably the stupidest questions.
No, no, and that, and I, and maybe I should have said this at the beginning. This is why I, I know this is a lot, right? Again, this board meeting is not something we have to do either. And the intent of this board meeting was not to be, be able to show you every single thing possible, because the board's not approving this until March. It's a discussion, you know, the board is not taking any action today. And so we're gonna do our best to help introduce the topics and answer questions. But this is, we're not done in this process. This is, the forty-five day period kicks off tomorrow. And we have a couple of board meetings before the March sixth board meeting. And if there are other things that we need to bring back and discuss and go over, if there are questions that come up as we go through, that's going to happen. You know, we, we scheduled this afternoon to do this, but it, it really is to kick it off and hopefully help you understand a lot of what's going on, answer your questions. But, but I, I, there's no way that everyone's gonna be able to leave this room today with like, oh, yeah, we're, we're good. We totally understand the, you know, SEQA, environmental impact report and all that, because this, this is a lot, six hundred and seventy-eight pages. I mean, this is months and months and months of studies. It, there's a lot of technical writing in here. I mean, we have, you know, with these specialists and what they have to write about, i- it's, it's dense in, in a lot of areas to be able to go through it.
I, I hear you, Mr. Cretchfield. I appreciate that explanation and, and you know, it's, it's, I feel strongly that it's not just, I'm only gonna speak for me. It's not just me who should, uh, feel fully informed about all of this stuff that is needed for a consolidation. It's the public.
Right.
Because as Ms. Parker stated yesterday, we gotta try to get these people to jump on board for phase two, phase three, phase ninety-eight, you know, twenty-five years from now.
Yeah.
Um, and if it's not done correctly, which I think is a term we've been using for a while now, it's not gonna happen.
Right. And so again, we have, you know, some members of the public here today, and that's where that forty-five day period comes into play, because that is a requirement in SEQA, right? And so that, that's what kicks off tomorrow. So it does give the public that opportunity to review the report, comment, and do all of that. And then even after that forty-five days, at the very end, public agencies get another ten days to comment as well. And so it does open up those opportunities for the input from the public.
Okay.
And I know that they'll have an opportunity to email their questions in. Are we going to provide time at the board meetings before it closes, uh, on people that might have questions on, uh, the EIR?
Well, well, there is a process for submitting the questions, but, but typically, Dwayne, could you explain what happens with those questions?
During the forty-five day review period, we'll, we'll collect all the comments and respond to those. And they will come before you in the March, uh, meeting, okay, in the final EIR. I think you're asking if, if there's another meeting that would occur during the forty-five day period. That's up to you. You could, you could schedule a meeting to, 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 you know, ask for more comments verbally, or whatever you'd like to do it. So that's up to you. It's not required. It, it would be, uh, an option.
And we won't see any of these comments until the final report comes in, or will we get a, an update partially the way through? You know, because if we get a lot in the first week or so, knowing what those are?
Uh, that would be up to, that wouldn't be our decision.
So I have seen public comment, um, processes where as the, the public comments come in, they are, everybody can see them so that you aren't, you know, making the same five-page comment. You can be like, if, if I'm making sense. You can second one that's already been submitted, and you're like, yes, they said everything I was going to say, for example. Yeah. State of California has that on, on their, um, public comment periods on proposed legislation.
Yeah, that's true. And, and I mean, if that's the direction the board would like us to take with looking at public comment, we can look into doing it that way.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, what is the, um, like, is there a platform for public comment, or how does that work, um, for this particular report?
We set up an email.
We set it up ourselves?
We, we set up an email address.
Okay.
That is specific to these public comments. So when everything goes live tomorrow, that email address is listed on our website and everything, because it's, what, what's going out tomorrow is what's referred to as a notice of availability. And so you might see NOA, and that acronym's used in other things as well. I, when I hear NOA, I think naturally occurring asbestos. So this is a notice of availability NOA. And so as part of that, we had our technology department set up an email address specific to that. So it's not, you know, funneled into somebody else's inbox or anything like that, and it keeps it specific to the public comments on this, on this study.
So it will come into the district, and the district is going to send it off to?
So at this point in time, Mimi Dean and I have access to that email. So we'll be the ones looking at those first, a- and then, and then providing those to, to Placeworks and going through it like that.
Do you reply to those comments? Are they questions? If, if they are questions, will you give answers, or?
Or do they just have to be answered on the, in the final?
Generally, we would, we would produce responses to comments. We really wanna see all of them together. We, we, we like to see them as they come in, but, but produce them when they're all in, and, and then provide a final document to you. Uh, it's, it's just very difficult to be answering questions as we go along, because it's, it's fits and starts. And, uh, one of the things that happens is we typically will get thirty comments on the same thing. And that way, we can organize that and have a good response, you know, just one response to all of those. It's just, it makes it very difficult for us to, to, uh, answer them as they come in. That, that's our preference anyways.
I have a question. Um, does the, this is more for Jared and Tori. Does the district have, um, consultants lined up to do these, uh, further analysis, like for infrastructure and for transportation?
Yeah, we're in the process of, of looking through that. We have a couple of consultants that are interested and lined up for this. But again, I, I don't think it's wise to bring contracts to the board for those until the SEQA document is finalized. So we're, we're in the process of, of, of getting organizations that will be able to handle mitigation. But then you, you won't see that coming to you as a board for approval until, unless, you know, until after this would be approved, if it is approved, on March sixth, if that makes sense.
My, I guess my own thoughts are, um, it would, it would answer a lot of the concerns that the public has if there was, say, the infrastructure for the water and the wastewater. Um, I don't know what the cost would be for that, but, um, and I also think some of the public that's here, that's probably some of the questions that they were wondering today that they were gonna hear about. And I know that's different than what the, this EIR, uh, review is, but in, in my mind, if, if there is a way, and I'll, I'm just throwing it out there, I, I think that we should consider, moving forward with having that analysis done, or at least getting proposals on it so that, you know, it, we're, we're trying to stay a step ahead.
I, I think this is a great question for Junaid, having legal counsel here. Um, because again, the, the timing of these things to ensure that we're following the law with this. I, I totally understand your intent, uh, to have that done prior to March sixth. But I don't know if that fits into the way this whole process should go.
We wouldn't wanna commit to those funds if ultimately we're not willing to go forward after the EIR is finalized, I think is where, what you're saying.
What I'm asking is, I mean, are we, are we ready to go? Cause we're, we're looking at having this done in twenty twenty-five. Um, if we're doing this, i- if we're waiting till March to get approval, and then we gotta put this out to bid, well, then you're, you're probably looking for another month beyond, at least, to put it out to bid, get responses, review bids. Then you're probably looking for another period of time to have one, someone on board. And, um, just my thoughts are, is, you know, we're gonna get crunched for time. Um, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're, we're trying to stay a step ahead, a step ahead of, of what our goal is so that we do reach it. I'm not familiar, um, this is my first, uh, school district job besides coaching, so I'm not familiar with, with the laws and stuff. But, you know, if, if, uh, if I was out and had a, had a project, that's one of the things I'd be looking at is, you know, having, having things lined up, ready to go, so that we could, you know, keep, keep moving forward.
I, I appreciate Mr. Crowe saying that, being the senior board member here, and at the back end of the solar project, and the, the community knows how long that project took. I know it's apples and oranges, but length of time and being a step ahead, I, I, I kinda agree with that as well.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't disagree at all. Again, I just, I'm, I'm gonna defer to Junaid to help us with some of the mechanics of that.
And who, who is this?
He's from Lozano Smith, our law firm, and specializing in facilities.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. Um, so the way the SEQA process works, right, is the draft document before you is, in a very real sense, a draft. All the comments that Dwayne and Mimi Dean and Jared will look at as the public provides them, will have an impact on that draft. And then what you will see at the end in March is a final document that you will get to say, yes, we're comfortable with this, or no, we're not. And part of that will be the mitigation monitoring program and the studies and analyses that are required by those mitigation measures, right? And so to do that work first, uh, before the document itself is final, uh, we might be missing something in the scope of those studies that may evolve out of public comment, which is why we wait for the final EIR to be completed first, and then infrastructure studies and analyses as they relate to mitigation monitoring come into play after the final report itself is approved by the board. Um, and that's why this process is kind of set up the way it is. Um, it, it is a lot of technical information, but it is also very much built on receiving comment from the public. Uh, and these next forty-five days, uh, is the public's opportunity to make that comment. And then for us and the district to go back and address those, uh, as required.
Thank you.
What we can do, though, is, and, and our plan at this point, is to request qualifications and, and get companies lined up that we will need to be compliant with mitigation measures. And what we're potentially exploring would be that instead of waiting for the document to be approved on March sixth, and then going out and looking for the help, we have the help lined up. And potentially, we could even do it at the same board meeting, having the EIR first. If it gets approved, then, okay, here's, uh, here's a contract with Ecore for biologists, paleontologists, although th- those groups. Here's a contract with a company to look at the wastewater and water and do that analysis. And so that there's not the lag time, 'cause I totally understand what you're saying, Shane, on construction. And James, in reference to the solar project, which was the very beginning of my time in my seat in two thousand seventeen, when it was supposedly already underway and we were under contract, but nothing had actually happened. And so we, you know, since then, we have done other construction projects where we have been on time. And so there's a lot, you know, to learn through that process. And so I think there's a way to, to line this up with expediency, but still in compliance, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it does. I just, I just wanna make sure that, uh, we're not, we don't lag or to get bogged down with, you know, um, coming up with, okay, what's our next step, you know, have everything planned out, and it, it sounds like, like you are. So that, that was my main comment is, um, I, I'm, I'm thinking that these consultants, um, they would probably be well aware of this project. And they would be able to do, start doing their preliminary, so they could hit the ground running when, when they're ready to submit proposals.
And I'll use Ecore as an example. I, I think in the end, I'm going to recommend using them as one of our main consultants. They were also a subcontractor for Placeworks, so they're the ones that identified all this. So that, they will be completely familiar with it, because they've already been out on our sites and everything else, and that will just help move the process along.
I, yeah, I think that'd be a good idea. Thank you.
Okay, would you like to go through the table?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, uh, I'm gonna start on page one ten with aesthetics.
Dwayne, can you answer that public, uh, question real quick, please? Thank you.
The question that came up was, do you include the LOS analysis in the EIR? Um, it is in the appendix. And so if you've got a copy, uh, either get it online, you'll see it as an appendix. Uh, or if you've got a hard copy, it's on the thumb drive. I forget which letter it is, but it, you'll find it in there. So it is, it is in there. And, and let me talk, let me mention one other thing about, uh, this, this transportation and traffic issue. Um, one I, one of the criticisms I have of it is that it, it, the state focused on urban areas. San Francisco, LA, places with transit, you know, bus routes, rail, sidewalks, um, you know, full infrastructure. And when you try to apply that same thing to rural areas, it just doesn't work, as, as you're realizing. And so it is frustrating. So anyway, that's my.
And, and I'll clarify, so, and I should have said this at the beginning. This document was already quite large to print, so the appendix sections were not printed. That's in your inside front cover, you have a thumb drive. The appendix sections are there. When it's all posted tomorrow online, the entire report and the appendix session, sections will be available online, and the transportation. will be available online, and the Transportation Operations Memorandum is Appendix K.
Okay, so I'm going to start with aesthetics at the top of page one-ten. And so we do have three campuses where we're making changes, and, and we have some, some grading going on, some issues where we're taking out a few trees, et cetera, and some new structures. But nothing that, as you can imagine, that's really a significant impact in terms of visual. And as, if you looked at the different categories, what you'd see is it's really a focus typically on scenic views. And so if we had a tall building that was blocking a scenic view, we'd call that significant. So those are the kinds of things we look at in terms of aesthetics. And as you see, we found that all of those particular issues were less than significant. So no mitigation measures were required. And I'll drop down to air quality. The project is, you know, you've got existing campuses, it's consistent with the air quality management plan, therefore it's, you know, there's no impact there, so no mitigation measures would be required. Next impact down has to do, and I talked about this before, and that is construction. And so you see in great detail all the different things that would be required during the, during construction. These all get part of the bid contracts with your contractors. So they have to maintain all of these different things. And you have a monitor that makes sure that they are doing those things. And so this is things in terms of idling of diesel trucks, all of those kind of things, watering the, in the exposed soil, et cetera. And in terms of soil, there's, the, the second mitigation measure there has to do with soil hauling. And, and it's an odd thing where, where they, they, they want to spread that out as opposed to concentrating it. You can imagine the contractors want to get all of it done at one, you know, one time. Well, that concentration can actually create an impact in terms of the emissions because you have so many diesel trucks at one time. So we kind of do the opposite of what you, what a contractor would want to do. We kind of spread it out over several days. So that's what AQ, the air quality number two mitigation does. We also looked at the third impact, now I've gone down to page twelve. Impact five-point-two-dash-three has to do with, you can have a situation where you've got such a concentration of cars or trucks, et cetera, that you can expose people to high concentrations of pollutants. We looked at that study that we don't have that situation, so we have no mitigation measure. So let me just drop down to biological resources. We've talked about that. We, again, the biologists went out there, identified that you have small, very pockets. And when you get into the document and you look at the bio section, you'll see what they're talking about. It'll be highlighted as to the area that might be impacted. These are small little areas in terms of where we might have plants that are sensitive. And so they go out there and, and do a survey and see if there is any mitigation that would be required. Best nesting bird survey. We have something called the migratory bird treaty act. And so if you're, if you're disturbing birds during nesting season, certain birds, you have certain requirements. And so we go out and do surveys. If they, if we do find birds that are nesting and you want to, you want to disturb them, there, there are restrictions against that. And so again, that's something we have to do before construction.
Dwayne, could we maybe take a pause? And this might help our board members as they navigate this report as we go through this. So if you, if you want to hold your place there in the first chapter, if you go to chapter five, this is, and a portion of that is dedicated to biological, the biological study. So five-point-three-dash-eight is the page number. And you'll see five-point-three-dash-eight. And you'll see throughout this document, there are fold-out pages. We have quite a few maps that identify areas when, when we're looking at what we're studying. And so in five-point-three-dash-eight, the page to the right of that pulls it out. And this is a, this is an overview of the high school. And so then it's showing you the areas that were analyzed for the biological study area because these are the areas that are going to be disturbed, and including areas that contain trees, right? And so when we're talking about migratory birds, then we have to, before we are going to remove any of those trees, we would have a biologist on site, and they would have to monitor it, take a look, ensure that there are no nesting birds at the time that we, we take those trees down. And so that would be an aspect of compliance to ensure that, that we're following the process here. And so you can see on the map, the areas identified that, that will be disturbed. If that helps, but I just wanted to point that out.
So, and this is, has nothing to do with anything here, I feel like, that we could potentially do about this. But I feel as if there is a larger section on migratory birds at Argonaut High School than there is at, for traffic mitigation and other actual, like, safety things.
So again, that, that goes back to Kayla, what, what's required in SEQA, right? This document is not focused on all of consolidation.
Right.
But it is focused on the birds.
Just the birds and the bees. All right, got it.
Not, not as much bees, but bats are also considered. So I just want to point that out.
There are like invasive moths too, or something? I don't know.
There's fairy shrimps.
You know, I share your, your concern and confusion about it. I, I've been doing this for forty years, and it's such a, a change to things. And, and, you know, and I teach a class on this as well, and I, you know, I kind of tell people if you expect kind of fairness or just common sense in SEQA, you won't necessarily find it. That's not what it's about, unfortunately.
I'm finding this out. I'm like, I just, I don't know, I just am like, I guess I wasn't really aware of what SEQA encompassed up until now. And I'm like, this isn't what I was expecting. And I feel like this is a lot of money that people are required to pay for, some of it important, for sure. I don't, I don't disagree with it, but some of it is like, okay.
Also, if we had done one less classroom, we would not have been required to do the full EIR.
That's interesting, too.
What does that mean?
So there's what's called a notice of exemption. And you'll see that with projects around the county, where if the scope of the project is, is smaller than a certain threshold, then you would not have to go through an environmental impact study. Examples of that are, you know, in, in my time, we've constructed three buildings in the district. One at Argonaut, one at Jackson Junior, and one at Plymouth. Those did not meet the threshold for going through an environmental impact study, so it wasn't even considered, and you do what's called a notice of exemption.
So how many classrooms did we do?
So once you do ten classrooms or more, you have to do an environmental impacts study, is my understanding.
Eleven.
Well, we have ten, and then we have the four portable classrooms moving in. So again, with the new construction, we're one over, and then you have the four classrooms moving in. So it definitely fits.
New information. I didn't know that.
I don't, I don't remember where I stumbled across that. I've been Googling madly.
I think Jared mentioned it back last year when we were talking about having to do the SEQA. This is the reason why we had to do that.
I believe so.
Okay, let me continue to page one-fifteen. And so I'm still in biology. Impact three-point, five-point-three-dash-two, that has to do with riparian habitat. We don't have any, so there's no impact.
Riparian habitat, is that water birds?
Riparian would be water-related, yeah. Wildlife habitat, excuse me, wildlife movement corridors, those kinds of things. I'm just reading down the kinds of things. These are the things that, that we did not have an impact on. We're not in an HCP and Habitat Conservation Plan. That's the last one that you see on that page. So again, no, no impact is required. And we don't have a cumulative impact. So I'm going to turn to the next page on cumulative resources. I think we've covered this already. And, and again, I'll emphasize that we, they did not find this to be a terribly sensitive area. And, and we do have mitigation for this one in terms of possibly finding resources. And it's really just kind of a, a common best practices mitigation measure. So we're not expecting necessarily that we're going to find anything.
And I think it's a good point in time to, to discuss this as well, Dwayne. When you, you mentioned it's not a particularly sensitive area. You have to remember, a lot of, a lot of what's written in SEQA is also set up for when you're building a brand-new school on, on a vacant piece of land, right? And so that we're not doing that. And so there, there are stories of districts who build a brand-new school, and then they come across a red-legged frog habitat. And then they have to mitigate that and do things of the sort. But because these sites have operated as schools for many, many years already, you're, you're not dealing with as many sensitive habitats or situations as you would see if we were taking a portion of the county that's completely undeveloped and then creating a school on that site.
So dropping down to energy. In terms of construction operation, or construction and operation, again, we don't expect a significant impact. We're not, we're not wasting energy, which is kind of the focus of this as well. We're now outside some local plan, et cetera, so no mitigation is required. And geology and soils, the issue here is, is a while back, they put paleontological resources under soils and geology. So they've kind of changed kind of where we look at this issue. But we do have a mitigation measure. And basically it's to have a qualified monitor out there to, to pick up any resources that they might happen to find.
And this mitigation measure is concentrated at Ione Junior High. Has to do with the type of soil and everything going on there. So that's, that's not identified as an issue at the high school. It's only at Ione Junior High where we would have a paleontol, paleontological monitor, sorry.
And the other issues in terms of your typical geology, you know, we don't have anything particularly sensitive, don't expect any issues, and therefore we have no mitigation measures. And I'll turn the page, greenhouse gas emissions. Again, this is all related to global climate change issues that we looked at very carefully. And again, less than significant impact. We're consistent with plans, and therefore we have no mitigation measures required. These are existing schools, as you can imagine, this is not going to be a...
I've had someone ask, why are we not, how are we not increasing the greenhouse gas emissions when we're putting in a permanent building that has four science labs? That building will be a hundred percent electric. And so people are, well, what about Bunsen burners and things like that? They make electric Bunsen burners and everything else. So that, this is going, the, the science labs are going to be equipped differently. There will not be any gas lines running to that building.
Next category, hazards and hazardous materials. So here, what we look at is, are there hazardous materials that are used in the, in the project and the, in the facilities? And there aren't anything other than kind of minor amounts. We also don't have, we're not exposing kids by doing grading in an area that's been contaminated. And so we look at all those kind of things and didn't find any impacts, and therefore we don't need mitigation in that category.
Greenstone has naturally occurring asbestos, if I remember. And where we're looking at putting that ten permanent classrooms, I know that there's a lot of greenstone in there. So that's not a factor?
Well, that's, that's been looked at, and, and I don't remember the details of that particular section, but we did not have an impact associated with it.
It has not been identified as significant with naturally occurring asbestos. We have one site in the district that has to be monitored for naturally occurring asbestos, and that's where our adult transition program is run, which used to be the Shenandoah Valley Charter School, just outside of downtown Plymouth. And so we go through a process with the Department of Toxic Substances to monitor that site. But not, that site, that area has not been identified as having a significant amount of naturally occurring asbestos.
Okay, thank you.
So hydrology and water quality moving down.
Dwayne, can I speak to this? Because I know it's come up in the public. Board members, I know you're, you're processing a lot right now, and so I, these are questions that I've received. I know there's a lot of discussion around the EPA super site that is so close to the high school. There's a lot of work, obviously, if you've driven by the school at any point in time in the last couple of years, you've seen the work that's been taking place. And so I've worked in, in close connection with John Helenbrand from the EPA. He's the lead for the EPA on that project. And so we, we've worked very closely together on, on the impacts and what, and what that means for the site. There are a couple of small areas that are in corners of the campus that potentially could have levels of arsenic that are above the threshold. The threshold on a school campus is teeny-tiny. And, and I don't want to say how many parts per million because I'll get it wrong. And, and with John Helenbrand, it would be, they would have to be, the children would have to eat the dirt, and a lot of it, to, to have any issues in those corners of campus. And, and the main corner of campus that may have an issue is where we are going to be paving for that parent drop-off area, which is one of the ways you can encapsulate that. Our site that has the most issues with that is actually Jackson Junior High School. There's a whole hillside that's encapsulated, and other mitigation measures that were, were done in the past having to do with tailings that were put on that campus. And so again, these are very minor areas, and John Helenbrand has been great to work with, with EPA. We're within the zone of influence, so when they work with us, there's no charge to the district. And, and they make sure that everything we do with the soil there is safe.
Okay, hydrology and water quality. These issues have to do with possibly creating erosion, those kinds of issues. Are we going to cover a lot of the area and impermeable surface? Therefore, we impact groundwater, then water quality issues, et cetera. We do have a mitigation measure for five-point-nine-dash-three, having to do with the drainage system, which we mentioned before. Obviously, you've got to do some studies and create the, the plans and the infrastructure to support the changes to the, the various sites. So fairly standard stuff, again, nothing extraordinary that we found.
Sir, you mentioned mitigation measures USS dash-two described below. And I'm trying to figure out where below is at.
Okay, it's, it's also in the table. And utilities is the very last, well, almost the last.
Is it back in the meat of the...
No, no. Still on the table, one-dash-twenty-six. So the mitigation measure is USS one, and you'll, that's where you'll find it, at the bottom of twenty-six.
It's one-dash-twenty-eight, because that's, this is a reference to USS dash-two.
Oh, okay.
USS dash-two...
I, I see it now, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no questions, I'll go to land use and planning. No issue there because these are existing schools, and so there's no change. Therefore, there's no issue related to, to possible land use or planning issues. With noise, we look at construction issues, operational noise, et cetera. And then we've talked about the fact that, that we do have a significant impact in terms of, at, at two of the schools being potentially significant. This is operational traffic, and we really don't have any feasible mitigation measures that would, would impact that. And again, it's really not just our project, but as I mentioned before, it's our project plus everything else that's going on in the area. We found an increase in noise that, that's over our threshold and is therefore significant. I'll just keep going, page twenty-two at the top, population and housing. We're not creating any new housing, we're not demolishing housing, there's no impact. So we don't have any mitigation. Public services and utilities. So we looked at fire, police, library services, recreate, well, excuse me, not recreation, school services. We, we, you know, we are shifting students around, and so there's kind of some changes there. But on the other hand, overall, you know, it's the same population. And so we wouldn't expect significant impacts in terms of those issues. Dropping down, I'll go down to recreation. Again, you wouldn't expect from what we're doing, you wouldn't expect any significant issues impacting recreation. And so no mitigation measures are required. And at the bottom of page twenty-three, transportation, and of course, we've talked a lot about that. And again, I, we have to go back to the issue of, we're dealing with VMT in this case and not LOS. You, you will find, well, the very first impact has to do with, are we conflicting with the plan? And we're not, therefore there's no impact there. The very next page is the VMT issue, and we're calling it significant and unavoidable because again, the TDM program, Transportation Demand Management Program, would not do enough to reduce impacts to the VMT increase. So it's significant and unavoidable. And let me, let me talk a little bit more about significant, significant and unavoidable. As we mentioned before, when you have a significant impact, you have a responsibility to look for mitigation measures. Now, if you, if you can't find one that works sufficiently, and it's still significant and unavoidable, you can still approve the project, but you have to... also approve what's called a statement of overriding considerations. And so you'll see that, if it continues in this way, you'll see that in March, where you will look at and compare the benefits of the project and the impacts. In other words, okay, we've got two unavoidable impacts here, but you also have the benefits of the project. You can weigh those and decide that you want to continue and approve the project, even though you have those two significant and unavoidable impacts. Okay, tribal cultural resources, essentially...
I have a question.
Yes.
So sorry, I just wanted to jump in before you jump to another category. Trying to, I'm really trying to understand this thing, and I'm going to be the first to admit that I'm struggling with this book. With that being said, I'm trying to read these things, and Table 1, Tac 1, page 24, it's saying, "Proposed project would not result in inadequate emergency services." Am I, is this a... Does that mean, like, if an ambulance needs to go down Argonaut Lane at 3, what time is school get out?
3:10.
3:10, they'll be able to get to Ms. Doris down the road at the home having a heart attack?
Which one are you looking at, 5?
It's page 24, impact 5, Jesus, 15-4.
Oh, -4, okay.
Because it states, "The proposed project would not result in inadequate emergency services."
So I think what he's trying to say is, does the traffic increases that we're not going to mitigate, is that going to cause a problem if there is an emergency at the school and emergency personnel needs to come down the road, but there is extra congestion that we don't have to mitigate?
Well, yeah, that's a good point. The additional congestion can slow traffic, but you have that kind of situation now.
Absolutely.
And, you know, they have, obviously, they use their sirens to get around, and, you know, they do the best they can. But that's a good question, and we did talk to the traffic engineers about that, and that was their conclusion. You can take a look in more detail in the document, and we will. But it's a good question, and we can provide more response on that issue.
Okay. Sorry.
No, fine, I appreciate all your comments. Very good point. Tribal cultural resources, essentially that's...
Excuse me, I got something to add or ask. So when I go back to, in the back of the document, like, page 5.15-2, so what this is, is saying, this outlines which each agency's responsibility is, is that correct?
Well, let me find your, what section again, 5?
5, page 5.15-2, it has regional, and then I think it goes, has a general plan, has an Amador County-wide pedestrian and bicycle plan, and then it seems like it goes over the cities.
Yes.
So when I read this, this is just saying what each agency's responsibility is in regards to transportation, basically?
Right.
Okay. So then, has, in the development of this document, has this, has anything as far as the history? One of the things that has come up that I've heard, Wicklow Way has been on the list for the county to be developed years ago, and nothing's been done about it. Is there any of that information provided, or is it basically, this document shows, this is what this agency's responsibilities are, this is what they look at, this is their planning. As part of that planning, is that going to tell us that, hey, this Wicklow Way has been in development, or has supposed to have been done a long time ago, but, you know, it's, right now, its status is still incomplete?
No, it won't.
Okay.
Basically, because we have to take the road network that we have and what has been committed to, and that's not been committed to, so we can't take advantage of it, or so.
And it doesn't reference history, or, because I noticed some of the pages here, like, it references the 2006 Amador County-wide pedestrian and bicycle plan, and so I was wondering if it, and there's an Amador County 2016 general plan. I guess I was just looking to see if there's any kind of history that would be provided in this document. Okay.
It doesn't.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, thank you. So tribal cultural resources is a duplicate of really what we talked about before under cultural. It's the same mitigation that we would have in terms of monitoring and retrieving of any fines that are found out there. And again, it's not terribly, we don't expect it to be sensitive, and we don't expect to find anything. And so continuing down to utilities and service systems, wastewater, we talked about USS-1, which is before the start of construction, you do these plans, you have to make sure that everything works sufficiently for wastewater.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Where, I actually asked a question regarding the lift station, and where does it state in here that there's not going to be any issues, everything's good to go with the lift station for Argonaut? Because that's a wastewater category, correct?
Right.
Yeah. Because I...
I think Jared knows it better than...
Currently, the thing breaks down, I believe you had stated before, right now, and if we add to it...
Let me find that, that was the first thing I looked for.
They did service on it, and I think they did a full replacement of the lift station not that long ago. So there's been, there's been a lot of work that's been done by the city on that, because they have an easement, so even though it sits on our property, it's their responsibility to maintain.
Who's there?
The city of Jackson.
Okay. Uh-huh. In the last meeting, you had stated that that lift station, or one of them, is shared with the community and the school?
So the reason, my understanding is, I think the original easement agreement, I did not bring it today, I think it was written in 1979, and that was with Jackson School District, and so obviously, we inherited that once we combined and Amador County unified. But it services, my understanding is, services the neighborhood adjacent to the high school on Westview Drive, and then a portion of the high school campus flows down to that lift station. Like, the gymnasium area in that side of campus flows down, the other side of campus does not. It's gravity-fed out towards Stony Creek.
Yeah, I was informed by the last person, I guess, who fixed it when it failed, that there's only three homes that are shared on that lift station. I... Or a particular one, I don't want to label a specific lift station, I mean, I'm assuming there's more than one?
It's, my understanding is, it's the neighborhood.
Okay.
And according to this, it says that a detailed analysis is going to have to be done.
Right.
You know, and it has to be approved by the city of Jackson, and Ione, it would have to be for Ione, too, the issues down there, and in Stony Creek, those respective communities.
Yeah, that's what it states.
One of the, I guess, one of the focus topics that I think would be focused on is the capacity of the plants, the treatment plants that are tied into the system. So, I mean, you know, maybe we, maybe there would end up being additional lift stations, but the main focus is, okay, what capacity is the plant's designed at currently? Normally, they have some type of population growth in their system, so that could handle for future development. So I guess, and my point is that the plants, water treatment, wastewater treatment, whatever their capacity is to handle, whatever the additional students are, but it looks, to me, it looks like we're offsetting, because we're moving students from certain schools to other schools, and then that's being offset by what's coming in. So I just thought I'd throw it out there.
So stuff goes to the lift station, from the lift station to the plant? Is that how it works?
From the lift station, there's a line that goes, do you know where the lift station is?
Absolutely not. I thought it was actually going to the shipping and receiving, where they wouldn't have to bend over to lift stuff anymore. I thought they were getting a lift. So I've just...
So if you go, so the varsity baseball field...
Right.
At Argonaut, just outside of left to left-center field.
Okay.
There's a fenced-in area.
Okay.
That is the lift station.
I know exactly where that is.
Okay. So then, that lift station, it's, what it creates from there is what's called a force main sewer. So again, most sewer lines are just gravity, right? This is a force main, so it's pressurized, so it pushes in the line. I'm not going to track the exact path.
Right.
But I know, I know most of the path. It comes underneath that walkway that you would go across from the parking lot below the tennis courts, it comes up underneath the small parking lot adjacent to the tennis courts, and then it continues and heads closer to Stony Creek, and is just around the corner of the new building, and then from there, kind of hugs along the road until it gets to the crest of the hill, and then that's where it can then pick up. My understanding is, from there, then it picks up into the main sewer line that is gravity from that point. So it's just taking the sewage from that area, and again, when we're talking about number of homes affected, that's why, if you just, I mean, obviously, I'm not a surveyor, but if you just look at elevations, I don't see how it's only three homes in that neighborhood that go to that lift station. Those homes sit at a lower elevation than that, that intersection of Argonaut, Stony Creek, and Hoffman, right where the courthouse is, right? So that, my understanding is, that's why the neighborhood goes down to that lift station, and then it pushes that up to the top of the hill, and then it's gravity from there.
Okay.
Does that help?
It does. The only reason I brought that up is because I had brought it up in the prior meeting, and it was a big old thing, so... And I have an obsession now with lift stations, so...
I'm happy to take you out there to look at it, if you...
Actually, now that you've told me where it was, I smell that thing every day at practice.
So in the part that talks specifically about the wastewater, and I'm on page 517-8, if anybody wants to turn to it, that's where it says in the second paragraph, and knowing where that lift station is located, down by the baseball field, and where the two-story building is going to go in, it makes sense that the new sewer line from the new building would go straight out and not down to the lift station first, right?
I, sure, I don't know. I mean...
Yeah. 517-8, second paragraph. Sewer from the proposed two-story, 10-classroom building would connect to the sewer line serving the existing shop, building, and gravity flow directly to the manhole at the intersection of, and there's a typo there, Argonaut Lane and Stony Creek Road. The new building would not add additional sewage to the city-operated lift station.
Okay.
And just basically, after all my years on Argonaut, there's the higher portion of campus, which is where the shop is, and most of the new portables where there is no bathroom, and Trilia, that's on the higher side, and then when you get past where the center quad is, it kind of drops off down there, it gets actually lower, and that's what feeds in to the lift station over there on that side. Okay, I'm going to turn to page, next page, 1-28. So in terms of water supply, we have the same mitigation measure, USS-1, which requires studies to make sure that we have adequate water supply, and the pipes, et cetera. Dropping down from there is the storm drainage system, and the plans to make sure that we've got the storm drains in place, and that they're adequate. In terms of solid waste, really, we're not increasing the number of students, and therefore we wouldn't expect to have any kind of an impact with solid waste, and no impacts are generated, and no mitigation measures necessary. And the very final one is wildfire. And again, we're not in sensitive areas, in immediate areas, so we don't have significant impacts there, and no mitigation. I have some questions that have been submitted, so if you don't mind, I'll go through those. Does Public Resources Code notes the number, which is the change from LOS to VMT, is stating, quote, "Does not relieve a public agency of the requirement to analyze a project's potential impact, transportation impacts related to air quality, noise, safety, or any other impact with transportation." What they're getting at is, yes, we changed LOS to VMT, but that doesn't mean you can ignore these other related issues, traffic, excuse me, noise, air quality, safety, et cetera. Doesn't mean you can ignore the related impacts from additional traffic. Absolutely true, and we haven't. And that's one of the reasons why our traffic consultants have looked at that issue. It's not really, it's not just about the whether we need improvements at a particular intersection, but also, they generate the traffic volumes we need to know, so that we can do the noise analysis as well. And the interesting thing, and I didn't really address this, I don't think, before, and that is, the safety issue related to congestion. If we had two traffic engineers up here today to talk about whether or not congestion harms safety or improves safety. On the one hand, higher traffic volumes and more congestion, many people would say actually reduces traffic accidents. Obviously, it changes the nature of them. You have more fender benders possibly, and you have fewer high-impact, if you have higher speeds, you have higher-impact accidents. And I've heard those arguments on both sides, and so, you know, it isn't clear, but it is an issue that we need to deal with, for sure. A cat X is issued when the initial study demonstrates we have significant impacts. It's not based on number of classrooms. There is something called the Class 14 exemption, that's minor additions to schools. That's based on two issues. One, adding 10 classrooms or fewer, and no more than 25, and an increase of no more than 25% or less, you could qualify for an exemption. Your secret consultant has made some comments that are not consistent with state law. Is the public going to be given an opportunity to clarify? Clarify?
45 days, right?
I'm not sure what you think is not correct, but if the last word is clarify, you have the opportunity to submit any kind of comments you want to. If you think I said something incorrect, please go ahead and submit the comment, and we will verify it and provide a response. The VMT analysis does not exclude safety analysis. The initial study, I can't read that word, supposed to ask you about safety. Does the EIR address safety impacts for the intersections around Argonaut? We've looked at that, you're going to find congestion analysis in this appendix, and so, and it sounds like that is an issue that's important to a lot of people, and so, you know, I'm sure we're going to get comments, and we'll provide responses to that in great detail. Appreciate that. Did the EIR provide Q analysis at the intersections, SR-88 at Argonaut Lane, per the Caltrans NOP letter? The traffic analysis looks at what they call warrant analysis, of whether or not a signal is warranted, and so that you'll find that kind of analysis in that appendix. Let me see if there's some other part of it. Whether left turn, right turn, I'm sorry, some of the language, or the handwriting, I can't read. I think we get the gist of it, and we'll, you know, we'll be able to write these out, but we'll make sure that we provide you with responses. Okay, let me go on. The VMT analysis, nope, I think I did that. So I think I've read all of the comment letters, you have more? New development has to participate in expanded capacity to pay fees unless you are demolishing the old buildings and get an agreement with the city for a credit, or a transfer of credits. That brings up an interesting point. The school district is the lead agency under SEQA. We didn't really talk about this. There are different kinds of responsibilities and roles in SEQA. The district has the primary approval authority over the project, and therefore you're the lead agency. The district has the primary approval authority over the project and therefore, you're the lead agency. Other agencies may be responsible agencies in the city or the county. For example, in Argonaut, you're gonna have, you're gonna change an access point and that's gonna require a city approval. That's different from, I think, what is being implied here about development fees, um, or, or traffic mitigation fees. Again, you're the lead agency, the, the city's requirements don't necessarily apply. I mean, you're gonna be working with them to make sure that you, this all works well in terms of the access points, et cetera. But, uh, anyway, that's my response to that particular question. Anything else? I, I appreciate everyone's comments and, and you know, we take this seriously, I think we've. Okay.
The, the timeline currently is forty-five days. Um, I will. I will, I will discuss it, um, at, with them. The question was, um, coordinating the response to the EIR, with the holidays and reduced council meetings, the forty-five day timeline is tight. SEQA allows the lead agency to extend, please extend to ninety days. That was the question, and we'll have to get back to you on that.
Who makes that decision? Whoever.
And I, I think we have to remember too, this is a meeting of the board in public. We're happy to take your, your cards over here, um, and at, once the board is completely done, then, you know, we'll get to the, if there's any additional questions at this time, but I wanna make sure that the board has a thorough amount of time to, um, interact and ha- ask questions of our consultants.
I, I appreciate the, the, the public's comments because I only know what I know.
Well, and that's why they will have the public comment period, so all of these questions, I would assume, all of these questions are gonna be submitted as well and so that we can respond to them in writing. It's really, uh, the questions right now really aren't necessarily gonna be the technical questions about this law or that law. It's really about maybe something that, um, Dwayne or Mimi Dean can speak to directly while they're here currently.
I have a question.
We'll go through all of those, I just wanna make it clear that this is a, this is a formal board meeting.
The, um, appendix, does it include, um, existing studies and reports that have been published by local agencies? So the Amador County Transportation, uh, their regional transportation report is not in there?
You'll find citations to everything that we reference and so you can find it that way, but no, we don't. That would be huge to include every, every jurisdiction's general plan and.
So it's, so it's referenced in the, in the EIR?
Yeah, you'll find references, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I do have another comment or another questions. Question, how will the intersection of SR eighty-eight, Argonaut Lane be improved if there is no project mitigation approved in the EIR by the, uh, school board? I, I, again, it's, it's an important question that everyone is asking. It will not be required, uh, we will not have a mitigation measure in the EIR that requires anything at that intersection. That doesn't mean that the school board, uh, working with other agencies can't come up with a solution for what is needed at that intersection. That's, that's totally up, sorry about that, that's totally up to, uh, uh, the agencies involved and, and, uh, these are important questions and, and, uh, I look forward to their solution, but it's not part of the, it's not gonna come out of the SEQA process, that's all.
Can you say that again?
I can say it better, maybe?
Sure. Or just again?
The, the, everyone's key, uh, question is about the, uh, intersection of Argonaut and the eighty-eight, okay?
Absolutely.
Okay, the question was, is, is, how, how is any mitigation gonna occur there if it's not required through the EIR process and, and approved by the school board? Okay, well, uh, there's no limitation from SEQA that says you can't go beyond what SEQA does and make improvements, work with other agencies, there's all kinds of things that you can do. And, and, and improvement of that intersection, working with other agencies, uh, would be one of them.
So it's standard, working with the, the county's agencies, okay?
Yes, yes, you know, we talk about something called fair share, and this, this goes back to LOS and, and the way we've done it for fifty years. Um, y- you figure out what your contribution to that intersection is, why it's now over the threshold, and you come up with a fair share, you know, some percentage. And that's one of the ways that, that agencies come together to say, well, we contribute this, you contribute that, and we make it happen.
What would be a benefit to only working with certain agencies rather than others? If one at all?
Oh, I, I, any, any agency that has any authority over a particular intersection you wanna work with. And, and other agencies that may not have direct authority over them but have funding sources. Um, you know, uh, there may be grants that you can come up with, especially if, if, um, I mean, there's a lot of infrastructure, uh, money that's coming from the federal government these days, you know, get together and see what you can come up with. Um, and you do that better through a, a group of agencies than, uh, going after it alone.
So it's just, it, this is the mitigation that we're talking about when we specifically, cause like, I mean, the intersection is the biggest issue for pretty much everybody that's here talking about it. It's not required in our ER, AIR, however, it's probably in the best interest of the school district to work with our commu- other community agencies to have a fair share mitigation plan to make that better.
That's correct, absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
For safety purposes, one.
Question mainly for Jared Torrey. Do we have a, any kind of upcoming meetings of meeting with these other agencies?
Again, as we're going through this process, we're, we're happy to meet with them. We've, I, I, to be honest, there's been, um, some issues in, in dealing with that and so I just wanna make sure that, uh, the next time we schedule some things, that we have certain individuals present so that they're done properly.
And this is just me being a novice at being a board member, is that something that, uh, I as a board member could participate in?
We can have up to, we could have two unless we, we have everyone, we just have to, um, make it a special board meeting and have it open to the public. Um, we could also designate a committee, um, if the two of you or whomever wanted to be on there, we can take two. If we don't wanna make it a formal board meeting, sorry to run my call.
Well, I, I would, I would be more than happy to, to participate if, if that was okay with, with the board.
If, I too would be more than happy, however, I feel like, um, all of the board should, should be able to, you know, uh, take part in it. Just my opinion.
And we can definitely do that, um, it's just a matter of schedules and those types of things, those meetings happen during the regular workday. So it's, it's completely up to you if we can offer it that way, and if we have more than two that can attend, then we can, um, set it up as a special board meeting or study session type meeting.
Let, let me ask you this, um, if there is a subcommittee of two board members, does that not make it a public meeting or a meeting in, in public?
Correct.
So if all board members attend, it is a meeting in public?
Correct.
If, if, if it was two though, can, could the, I guess, the summary of, of the meeting, that could be presented at the board, upcoming board meeting, so. Correct me if I'm wrong, if we have a subcommittee of two, so let's say James and Shane, and if I went to the meeting, as long as I didn't speak up and say anything, that would not be a Brown Act violation?
I feel it'd be a good little field trip for all of us.
You know, I, I'd like to try and see it scheduled, wherever we could all be there so we all hear the same thing and we can all voice our concerns.
I agree. I agree.
I've never agreed more with you about something.
I, I'm not gonna have any further questions until I read, so.
Until what?
I read this. Unfortunately, I've read through a couple of sections, but, um.
Was there any more questions? Or comments, sorry?
There was just one about why, um, is there a reason why a question cannot be asked by a, a community out loud, which we've read all of them out loud, uh, why is it presented this way? It, it, we've read every question that, um, has been asked today. Oh, you're referring to the questions that get sent in by community members, you mean, during the process?
No, I think she's asking why there isn't like a formal, um, public comment. How at our regular board meeting last night, we had public comments come to the podium, I think that's what they're asking.
Cause this is a study session, it's not a formal board, it's a formal board meeting, but it's a study session. It's not a regular scheduled board meeting, so the agenda is very different. Um, the other question is, what is the school district's collaboration with local city and government agencies to provide support and funding to increase and ensure student pedestrian safety? How is the school district working with the agencies such as Caltrans, Jackson Police, Amador County Transit Commission? Specifically, is the school district funding or assisting with improved safety at Argonaut Lane and Highway eighty-eight? I'm gonna let you, you wanna answer that? Just what, what our response, it's really about what our responsibility is and how we are collaborating and how we will collaborate.
Can you read that again? I'm so sorry.
Sure, you want me to read it?
It was really long.
I know, okay. Um, what is the school district's collaboration with local city and government agencies to provide support and funding to increase and ensure student pedestrian safe, safety? Do we wanna an- answer that one first, we'll start there, we'll break it down.
Part of the SEQA process is like we talked about, inter-agency coordination, and so, all of these different agencies are gonna get this document and they're gonna provide us with comments, and so there's, there's that. The SEQA process kind of forces this communication, and you know, if they, if some city or county or Caltrans think there's an issue, they're gonna tell us about it, I mean, they're not gonna be quiet, they're gonna tell us about it. That gives us a framework to, to talk about that and move forward. In addition to that, you can also have other discussions and, and completely outside of SEQA and, and work with those agencies, create a, a group, as you're already talking about, create a group to meet with these agencies and, and move it forward and come up with solutions.
The next part of that question is, how's the school district working with agencies such as Caltrans, Jackson Fire, Amador County Transit Commission? Specifically, is the school district funding or assisting with improved safety at Argonaut Lane, Lane and Ha- Highway eighty-eight?
So does that mean that are we, are they asking if we pay for the mitigation?
Yes, how are we working with them or are we providing funding and assistance with improving that particular intersection?
The answer is, is no, through the, the SEQA process, you're not required to do that, that, at the same time, what we're talking about is getting together with the other agencies and trying to come up with solutions and you may be contributing, it's all voluntary, but you may be working with and contributing funds, uh, towards that end. But that's, it's not part of the SEQA process, not a requirement.
Is, is that a common practice for everybody to kinda get together and figure it out and?
Yes, yes, and sometimes it's tense, I'm not saying it's, it's all.
Absolutely.
You know, roses and whatever, it, you know, it can be tense and, and, but ultimately, uh, come together and come up with a solution.
Is it common for multiple funding sources? Did I ask that right? Or is it common for somebody to be like, nah, you're footing the bill, bud?
That, that's a good question, and again, I do this all over the state, uh, with school districts. And I can tell you, cities very often, um, believe that school districts have a lot of money. And, you know, and I'm not saying it's true, I just say that's the typical perspective from a city. And so they will often treat you as a developer coming to them looking for a permit.
Actually do a fair kind of share portion where there is multiple agencies contributing to their portion of responsibility for whatever it is that's being mitigated.
Yes, but, but typically, un- understand it's more typical that what you have are developments in the area. Those are developers that have to pay developer fees and they are contributing. Very often, the city portion of it's really kind of the developer footing that bill. And then if you're, if you have a school project, you may be footing the bill for some percentage as well.
Say that again? I'm sorry, Shane, I didn't catch it, say what you just said.
I'm just saying that the more tr- typical situation is that, let's say you're in a developing area and you have a few developers that are, you know, coming with so many hundred new homes or something, whatever it is. The, the city or the county, whatever the agency is, will have a developer fee from that, okay, so many, so many dollars per, per unit. And that will go towards some intersection that needs to be, uh, fixed, okay? And so, imagine these different, um, fair share amounts being calculated for fixing that one intersection. If you had, if you had a school coming in at the same time with the same issue, you may be also footing part of an intersection improvement. So typically, a new school might be doing that.
Okay, thank you.
My question was, um, if the board members have questions as we start going through this, do we submit those through the email address or do we, how do we do that?
I think it would be best if you just send them directly to me.
Okay.
Because again, this is the public's opportunity to comment through that web address, not the board's, right? So eventually, you'll be approving this with the public comment, but if you need clarification through the process, I would just reach out to me directly.
Okay.
With the questions that we reach out to you, can we, um, like, email you and then we also get an email back of the answer in writing?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay.
I mean, and there will be times, James, where, I think you know this, I'm not a SEQA expert. So there will be times when I may call upon Janade or Dwayne or Mimi Dean to assist in that response back to you.
I just, the reason I say that is because I'm not always able to answer the phone and talk about it and then email or something that I can go back to to read. Cause if I read it first, I'm like, whatever, and I gotta let it process and go back, and I'd be like, oh, okay, that's what he meant.
Yeah, that's totally fine.
With it in writing helps me understand.
Not a problem.
And the other thing we can do too is if we get an email from a board member, we can take the question, respond, and then we'll send it to everyone.
Absolutely.
So you all, so that, that way.
One, what one board member knows, all board members know. That's a great idea.
Yeah.
Did you guys have any other questions? Not yet, right, of course.
Out of reading.
Yeah. I, I actually wanna get into the appendix.
Do you have this on audible?
No, we do not have it on audible.
Um, I do wanna make a really quick statement about that the full document electronically will be available tomorrow on the website, correct?
I believe it's going live at midnight, yeah.
Okay, and anywhere else legally, we need to have it, what are the legalities of where we need to have this posted?
There's an ad in the paper tomorrow that's running about it as well.
Okay, yeah, if we could just maybe quickly, cause that way it's on the record about just the different steps of where we have to post it, that'd be great.
All right.
Okay, hold on, give us just a second, Janine's gonna look that up first. I just want, um, the public to, to know and the board to know if you get questions, you know, where they can go find it, there's different avenues for that.
I think Mimi Dean can help with this too.
Oh, perfect, thanks, Mimi Dean.
Yes, it's been po- it's been going in the newspaper on Friday in public notice, and then it's also here, posted here at the county, on showing where the website is and who to address the comments to. And then it goes live on the district's website at midnight. And so all of it's available on the website, we're putting it in two different forms, a cumulative document, this whole report, but also available by chapters, cause some folks may not be able to download the whole document, um, on their personal computer. So we're providing it, and then the appendices are separate. So it gives you some options of how to capture that data that you're interested in.
We will also have hard copies available for anyone who wants to come and review them in our office. We won't have any that they can take with them, but we're happy to allow space in the building if somebody wanted to come in and, and look through the actual hard copy document.
Correct.
Just come to the superintendent's office and we'll navigate that. The key is the appendix.
Yeah, the flash drive with the appendices.
Appendices.
Again, like I said before, the printing was already cumbersome and we just didn't wanna print all the appendices as well as this is, this is a large document.
And then just to add is that it will be going out through Parent Square so that all employees and parents and students are notified of the availability.
Um, I know Haley's not here, do you know if anybody has subscribed to the consolidation updates through the, the Parent Square link yet?
I don't.
We can get back to you.
Haley's been managing that.
Yeah, we can get back to her.
Cause they would also get an update with this, right?
Yes, yes. If anyone on the board would like a hard copy of the appendices, we're happy to make you a copy of that. It's, how large is the appendices? How many pages?
It's this big.
You don't want to know.
That's just the appendices? This is just the appendices.
I-
That's more.
Definitely more. I would suggest try to bring it up electronically, but you can have it printed.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If anybody wants them, we have no problem making a copy and putting it in a binder for you.
And then also just to note, it is being posted on two locations within the district. It's on the consolidation webpage, and then it's also on the original of where it was available. So it's two places. So we're trying to make it as available and easy to access.
I think if I remember what Haley was saying last night, it's going to be actually three places on there. I think, on the website. Maybe one in facilities, one on consolidation, and one on the general page or something.
I think you're right. I told her to put it everywhere, so.
Because I, we're trying to put it everywhere and then have hard copies available if someone wanted to come in. It's going to be in the superintendent's office, business office. And so it's trying to make it as available to the community and the public.
Currently, if you log on to our website, the beautiful pop-up that you get that you have to X out of forces you into the consolidation hub if you, if that's what you're looking for. We've tried to make it as easy to find and user-friendly. So if you click on that, it'll take you right into the hub, and we'll make sure that it's right at the very top. You won't be able to miss it. It'll also be, if you've already clicked on that for the day, you only get that pop-up once a day, every 24-hour period. Once you've clicked out of that earlier, and let's say it's later in the day and you wanted to go in to see something new, if you, we'll have it running on the banner as well that clicks up. I think there's usually five or six different things that are pretty common, things that people are looking for. We'll also put it there, as well as probably somewhere in the facilities page, which is going to be much more deep, but some people will just naturally go there as well.
Right, but we're putting it across so that it's easy to access, and you don't have to go deep into your website. It's right there.
Is it a, does it have a shareable link in case someone asks for it that we could share?
You could share, once you're in the document, you can share that link to whomever you wish. You can do that from a cellphone or from a regular device. And if, you know, if you have questions along the way about those types of things, just, you know, text or call Jared or I, and we'll help you with that, no problem.
Well, thank you. I think it's very eye-opening to realize that this is just step one. It's the biggest, longest step, but it is still step one of the CEQA and the EIR in that we still have a lot of fine-tuning ahead of us before March. So I think we got a little ahead of ourselves with questions that are still not even answered fully in the EIR. Like, some of the answers are, you have to have a study. So I think that that is good. I think that's reassuring. I think that's what we were looking for, just at the first glance even. So I thank you for coming and taking this time with us. I know not everybody asks you to make a presentation of the EIR, but we are all brand-new to this process, and to this much information at one time is definitely daunting. So thank you very much for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one last question. I'm sorry, that was a good point. Is it common for boards to ask you for a presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we have all situations, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I also wanted to thank the members of the public who joined us today. And I know we had blocked out even more time, but that was such a, a large amount of time. It's a big commitment to come, but to get the first look at the EIR and its draft report. Personally, this is just me speaking, I hope that we can continue forward in a spirit of collaboration, of mutual concern. So we all want what's best for kids. So let's stay focused on that common priority, and I think we will, we will get to the end of this process. I think we're ready to adjourn. Thank you so much. It is 3:10, maybe 3:09, I can't tell.